... agenda tonight, so it is seven o'clock and I am going to call to order the December 10th meeting of 2019 of the Town Council if we can all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and is a republic for which it stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, before we do a moment of silence, I wanted to take a moment to say we received some pretty clearly bad news today. Representative Tim Ackers wife, Teddy, passed away and I'd like to take a moment to commemorate the loss of a really of a wonderful lady and just to take a few seconds here to think kindly on Representative Ackers, their children and their grandchildren, so. Okay, I've been asked by Lisa to remind everybody to put your microphones close in the people in the audience so they can be heard. Item four, we have no prosthones or presentations tonight. First, we have our first set of public petitions, communication and public participation. I know there are people in the audience who are discussing other things on our new business items, so if you want to wait till new business items to talk, anybody else, if you have anything else within the jurisdiction of the Town Council with a two-minute limit, seeing that, we're gonna go on with that. We have no hearing items. We won't see Katie at the audience, so I don't believe we have any reports of boards or committees responsible to the council. That gets us to seven B with reports of the Town Council liaisons.
Yes, last night Planning and zoning had a meeting. The bulk of their meeting was on legal training with Kenneth Slater Jr. from Halloran and Sage. They went over the charges of all the land use commissions and spoke about basically things to look out for, what each board commission's appointed with, and we also discussed a little bit about social media and the pitfalls. It was a very, very comprehensive presentation. There is, in case anybody's wondering, as part of the packet, they do have some outlines on each of the land use groups and what they encompass, but I found it very educational and thank you for bringing them in. Was there anything you wanted to highlight specifically for that? Thank you.
Heidi, do you think you could provide us with a copy of that packet, or at least I would like to see it, I don't know if anybody else?
Yeah, the packet wasn't his presentation. I'll see if I can get it. It's something they come out and do for free, so they're not always willing to give us the full stuff, but I'll ask.
Okay, if you could, that'd be great. I wanted to go, but my body said no.
Yeah, a lot of the members that were there said it was probably the most impressive presentation I've seen in several years, so they did a really great job.
Anything else?
That was it. That they covered. Two and a half hours.
Yeah, I heard it was a long one, so that's good.
No, it was thorough, but comprehensive.
You were there as well. Last week, the Conservation Commission held their presentations from the Yukon Students for One at property. It was very impressive. It was great speaking with all the students, all the efforts they put in, designs, the layouts, and a lot of that focus they made sure was ensuring both ADA compliance and focus on ensuring it was senior geared, as dictated by the transfer of property, but also ensuring that it was multi-generational use as well, so that grandparents could bring their grandchildren and kids with them to use the part. But it was very impressive. Hopefully we'll do those presentations soon as well. They're going through that process, but I sent a thank you to Professor Park as well, for all her efforts.
It was great.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, there is a meeting tomorrow night, so I'll be there for that one, as I think they're normal meeting in the same room.
Okay. EDC met and they elected their officers again and they developed their, well, they talked about their development goals, which include organizing the host business forum for the existing town businesses that they started in the last term, continuing that going forward, identifying how to proactively engage prospective business owners. Funny, because one of the things that they talked about is one of the things that we just talked about, marketing Tallinn's image and community brand. So it kind of falls in line with one of our goals. So they were talking about meaning to identify costs and approaching the Town Council, you know, in their January 2020 meeting to discuss it, so it falls in line with us. There was no Board of Ed meeting and Eastern Highland is tomorrow, so I will have a report on that next time.
Nothing for me. I'll have WPCA next meeting.
For Perch Grove Committee, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but I was able to get some reply back and forth on emails with Katie Marion-Brandstone, gotten some design drawings, going through them, and that will be prepared for when they meet next Tuesday.
Kurt is on the side of the road. His car's broken down, so he is not gonna make it to tonight's meeting, he said, unless he gets a ride and gets here quickly, so he is not here to report. So that moves us right into new business and item 8.1, which is the discussion of creating an ADA committee or a commission on disabilities.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. Good evening. I just wanted to sort of set the stage for this business item tonight. I think to set the record straight, first of all, we should probably stick with the non-clature commission on disabilities. That tends to be the more appropriate naming of these committees, and that's in line with other committees, that other communities have similar commissions of this type. So this was an idea that was actually driven to us by proponents who I believe are in attendance tonight, and I wanted to mention off the bat that what the Town Council needs to consider is if it would like to establish a commission on disabilities at a future meeting, and if it should want to establish one, that it will need to consider the COD's mission, which can be drawn from other communities who already established one, and on the committee, who will comprise the committee? Will it be staff, volunteers, both? The number of committee members and if terms will be concurrent or staggered. So I think it would make sense at this time if you wanted to introduce the proponents and understand a little bit about what they're looking for for this new commission.
Okay, so this is an item on our agenda that is not a vote, it's not an action item, and we're gonna handle it like a, it's exactly what it says, it's gonna be a discussion. So first of all, I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight to the Town Council meeting. The intent is to have a conversation. With that in mind, shortly, shortly, I'm gonna open up the floor for you to tell us what having a commission on disabilities means to you and the issues you're currently facing as either a person with challenges or an advocate for a family member. Before we get to that part, I wanted to give you an update on where we are as a council in relation to this. First of all, in our goal-setting meeting just this weekend, the commission on disabilities was identified as a high priority goal item for this council. As Mike indicated, the Town Council will actually need to vote and establish the commission at a later meeting, and in doing so, we will have to undertake quite a few actions. Those will include creating a mission statement, which I hope to have your input on, creating the Board of Composition, which we will include members of the community and/or advocates, guidelines along with bylaws, and an appointment process. I'm gonna forewarn you that this is a learning process for us. We may not always get it right, whether it be the wordings we use, we may not understand, or just our general lack of knowledge of what difficulties you're facing as a community. I ask your indulgence and understanding while you educate us and we learn. With that being said, I can pledge to you that we will be educated, honest and supportive in this endeavor to work with you to provide help, guidance and information in all ways that we are possible. For a little history, this topic came up during the campaign trail and several of us may have answered your questions either privately or publicly. This is the time when you get to hold us accountable to our promises. Actually, it gets more fair to say that I may be speaking for myself more than others in this matter, because I am not fully aware of who may have responded or spoken to you directly already. I want to be very upfront and clear that we may not be able to fix all or even most of the issues that you're facing, but we can look at what we can fix and we can attempt to create pathways to fixing the items that we may not have ultimate control over. We also hope that by having this commission, we can have a collective voice at the state level in conjunction with other towns to bring awareness to these issues and hopefully find resources to help create or improve fixes, at the very least gather information that will be beneficial in the battles that we know you guys are all facing. We are stronger collectively than we are individually. So again, thank you all for coming. Thank you for taking the time to educate us, and with that, I'd like to start the discussion. So if you can please come up to the microphone one at a time, list your name and address. Felisa, we're ready to start learning.
Hi. Hello?
Yeah.
My name, thank you for having us. This is wonderful. My name is Susan Lucy Hughes. I live at 777 Tallinn Stage Road in Tallinn. I'd also like to acknowledge that the group of people that has brought this to you is very passionate and committed. We also have in town, I'd like to recognize and introduce Walter Blom, who's the Executive Director of the Connecticut Council on Intellectual Disabilities, so an incredible resource to have right here. So we all live in Tallinn, we all have a family member with a disability. My daughter, Annalee, is 20 years old. She's in a wheelchair. She'll be in a wheelchair forever. She's been through the Tallinn school system since day one and is going to graduate in the spring from the program at 21 years old. So the challenges that she has faced, we have faced along the way range, they change, because when you have a child, the challenges and the issues you face with a disability are going to be different than when the child gets older. Originally, or initially, it was a lot of accessibility issues, just how can we get her where we want her to be so she's included with the activities and any activities that kids her age are doing. Now that she's getting close to graduating and leaving the school support system, the challenges and issues are more about job opportunities. Where's she gonna live? How's she gonna afford it? What are the social and recreation activities that are available in town? First of all, we're used to 21. So this committee, the idea of this committee for me is so wonderful. I see the opportunity to bring people with all different kinds of expertise and developers, business owners, special ed, transition education, parents, the town, together to really look at how to address these challenges and maybe improve on them as best we can, and eventually, I think the ultimate goal is to improve the quality of life for everyone in Tallinn, not just people with disabilities. But again, I think that the group that has brought this to you is very passionate, very committed, a huge wealth of information and resources, and in my opinion, really, really ready to help get this going and make it a success. Does anyone have questions for me?
I don't have a question, but I just wanna make a comment. This is, what you're talking about is the reason why we're here, so people from the community can come and tell us what they need, and I'm very appreciative that you're here and you're at my full support, and I hope there's something that we can do to help you.
Oh, really?
What you need to do.
Lots of things.
I just wanna say the same thing. We're, my family, that we have friends and neighbors that are suffering the same type of issues that your daughter is, and that it's something that's very near and dear to us, and so that anything that we can do to support any of the programs, we're just looking for denaligences, suggestions of the families that are involved in it, so that we can know how to focus our efforts and what, how we can best support those in need. We have our own ideas, we have, you know, we have ideas as far as what we can do, but it's the people that, the families that are really in need that we really need to hear from, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Lee and I live at 16th Hunter Drive in Tallinn, and I was an educator in Tallinn for 26 years. I taught regular ed and special ed, and during the time that I was teaching special education, I had my daughter, who is 28. She was born with a genetic syndrome and has an intellectual disability. She's very fortunate to work at Big Y in Tallinn, so that's a big plug. However, we're right now dealing with housing. We would love to see her in an apartment as a roommate, but I don't see that in Tallinn in terms of low-income housing. The other huge issue we're facing right now is transportation. Because of where we live, we are .02 over the line, so that the Hartford Transit District cannot pick her up. I can drive her each time to go over to the commuter lot, because she also works in stores. She has two jobs and her second job is very far for her. So I drive her to the commuter lot, she then takes the bus, the express bus, over to Yukon. They drop her at the edge of Yukon, and then it becomes the Monique Transit District, who then must pick her up there and transfer her to her other job, and she has an anxiety disorder, so that makes it very challenging. But I am extremely excited that we're gonna be able to work together and talk about some things that maybe will make her life and other people in this community better and more inclusive. So thank you so much.
It's for people at home. Anyway, hi, my name's Walter Blom. I wanna thank Susan for putting me on the spot. Again, my name is Walter Blom. I live at 53 Old Post Road. I'm a dad. I have three sons. My youngest, who's now 31 years old, has Down Syndrome. I've been an advocate for him and others my whole life, and, or his whole life anyway, and I'm currently the Director of the Connecticut Council on Developmental Disabilities, which is an agency of the state funded by the federal government to assist Connecticut in improving services for people with developmental disabilities. And I just wanna say, if you do this, and I hope you will, I'm more than happy to help out. I mean, you know, I'm at your call. If you have any questions, you want to have any assistance, I am aware of what's going on in many other towns in Connecticut. In fact, I'm aware of what's going on in many other states in the U.S., so, you know, there is a wealth of information available to you in terms of scoping, you know, your activities, what you might do, what might be practical, and, you know, I'm here to help, so there is.
What you wish for.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I've been doing a little bit of research on my own, looking at some of the towns that have commission on disabilities, and it's kind of frightening because the majority of them are much bigger towns than us. They are more, you know, city-like. They have a lot more, I don't wanna say services, but like state, no state resources than a small town like Tallinn. So I'm wondering if along your way, if you have any good examples of small towns that may be trying to conquer this and what they're using?
I'd be happy to bring that to you, but I'll say this about that. I hope that if you create the commission, it's not necessarily gonna be about town services or any special new town services. My job in the council and my charge from under federal law is to see the communities become more inclusive, and I would put it to you that you already have the assets, you already have the program, you already have plenty of stuff going on in town, whether it's the school districts or your rec department or whatever else you're doing in town. And I've only been here for a couple of years. I'm the transplant from Ellington, so.
Welcome.
So I'm still getting to know you, but the point would be creating a more inclusive community and looking at what you already have, the assets you already have, and what can you do in policies and procedures, attitudes, language, and maybe on the margin with services, you know, speaking of transportation, you know, which is a big issue that we're looking at, and, you know, we're working on the state. Hopefully we can get the state to come out here and give you some help with that. So it's not so much, and I don't wanna speak for others in the room, but I wouldn't presume this is an ask for more funded town services necessarily. It's more a matter of maybe looking at what you have in terms of programs and how do you make those more inclusive? How do you reach out to this community and involve those folks, whether it's physical accessibility, which in most cases is the law, so you don't have a choice, but, you know, also, you know, for those with intellectual or behavioral issues or whatever, you know, it's that kind of thing. So don't assume that this is something that requires a lot of resource necessarily. In many cases, it's, it may be more attitudinal. Not that anyone has a bad attitude, but I'm just saying, you know, just awareness, you know, can make a huge difference. So again, I'd be happy to help you with that.
I'm sure we are going to be taking you up on that, Mr. Blom.
Yeah, they don't necessarily think from, you know, the county's opening statement, I think, you know, obviously we need to be educated, right? So I don't think there's, you know, from our points of view, we're not necessarily aware of all the inventory of things that are currently, you know, in, you know, in play within Tallinn in terms of the services. So yeah, so it's, you know, from our points of view, it's again educating us in terms of what we have and what we don't have, right? And that would be part of the commission to, you know, to do that for us, so we could, so we could better those things, or in some cases, to your point, then make recommendations on if we wanted to go one step further and fund some additional things on that list, if you will.
And I'm definitely interested in what we can do at a state level. I think as more towns start to form commissions on disabilities, like I said, it's, rather than, I know Annalee spends a lot of time at the Capitol, but it would be nice for Annalee to have six towns standing behind her saying the same thing, you know, it gets, there's power in numbers. So us making this commission gives us a little more voice and it kind of shores up the boat a little bit more.
And if I may, to your earlier point, looking at some of these, some of the specific issues that we're working on, pick two, housing, transportation. At the Capitol, you will find, and I'm sure you're all painfully aware, a tremendous amount of resource going to urban areas, okay, particularly in affordable housing area, but also transportation, right? And then, you know, what happens when you're .02 or whatever outside the boundary? Too bad for you. Well, that's one of the issues that we happen to be looking at right now as a council, is okay, the jobs aren't in Hartford anymore, right? They're out here. People like to live out here, okay, so how do we make that happen? Getting the attention of folks at the, like LOB, to pay attention to towns like Tallinn. You're absolutely right, you know, Annalee can accomplish a lot, but, you know, having, you know, a few towns, you know, behind her saying, hey, you know, what about Tallinn? What about Mansfield? You know, what about Stafford? We need that, because there is, there is a bias, for whatever reason, towards funding these kinds of things in denser areas. And in many ways, there's more of a need out here, you know, just because of the way things evolved over time, so, yes.
And our logistics, like, you know, we're not like even in Manchester where there is so much that's easily accessible by sidewalks.
Manchester's almost a model, you know, for what we like to see, but somehow, how do you do that here without making town a Manchester? By the way, a little over here in the corner, so I just endured a summer of that. Urbanization.
Don't want any more of that.
So, you know, we're not looking for that, but, you know, what do you do here? You know, what are the solutions that are appropriate out here? How do you make that work? And again, be happy to dive into this with you in a minute.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, well, thank you guys for the information input. We will have this in January?
So we have two meetings in January, the 14th through the 28th. I know I'm gonna probably take a look at some of our surrounding communities that have CODs and try to mesh together some language based on the input I've heard tonight and to see if we can put together a mission statement for our proposed COD, and I'll present that to our either January 14th or 28th meeting.
Now, commission on disabilities, does that work for you guys? Is that like encompassing enough? I don't wanna mention anything with ADA, because, you know, it's not, you know, it's not the same. So I think this is definitely a totally different commission, so, wording good with you guys? All right, so, commission on disabilities, the COD.
And I'd like to encourage you, if there's something else that you're like, when you walk out the doors, like, oh, I forgot to mention, please shoot us an email. We understand how daunting it is to get up in front of that mic and without, you know, copious notes, sometimes it's very easy to miss something. I've been in numerous 504s and then walked out the door and been like, oh no, I forgot something. So please feel free to continue to reach out for us.
Be careful what you wish for.
Listen, a very legit email, you know, it's super easy. It's towncouncil@tallinn.org. You know, if you wanna contact anybody individually, if you have questions for them, all of our emails are out there on the website. There's probably 18 different ways to get ahold of all of us, but tallincouncil@tallinn.org gets you, everybody that's up here with the exception of Lisa.
I just noticed something. You mentioned, bring this over to the mic so I can say, job opportunities, recreation, social, housing, transportation. What about access to healthcare? Is that something that, or has that come under transportation with you too, or is that something that might be, because I know for me, going into Hartford all the time is daunting.
Well, I can, I can give you a comprehensive list, list out of the DD Act. I mean, yeah, education, healthcare, recreation, transportation, housing.
If it's a regular thing that anybody's thinking about, you're thinking about it too. It's probably easiest way to look at it.
I would make sure to add just general accessibility on it.
General accessibility.
Social events.
Yeah, I had recreation, but social.
And I do have a question for Ms. Blom. Is there, are there resources or is there a listing on the state website for as far as some of the programs that are available or any other information so that we can start, at least use that as a primer, and now will I saw you upon the group of you to provide us information?
I can point you to some things, if you're happy to.
If you could, please, that would be outstanding.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
TallinnCouncil@tallinn.org. Load us up.
Thank you guys for coming out. Suzy, it was great seeing you and John at the road race running by. It was phenomenal.
We ran by you, I don't think so.
You were ahead of me, but, you know, we were keeping pace for the first lap. But no, Annalee's always an inspiration, and I was just also gonna say, Kim, I grew up on Reebok, and I believe I actually went to school with your daughter, yeah. So it was always great seeing her. I forget our teacher's name. She always loved Puffins.
Oh, yes, Ms. Grinell.
Yeah.
I got stuck with the, I got stuck, my kid got stuck with the salamander thing. Oh, it was a Christmas present. No, it was not. No, Ms. Grinell was wonderful, I would.
No, she was always a treat to interact with and, you know, grow up with through the system and through the middle school, so it was just good to see you. I now live in Old Stafford, but my parents still live off of Carter.
Yeah, very good.
I remember delivering your newspaper to her. I think you were nice and put a yellow box at the bottom, so I helped.
And if that didn't just age me, he had the same teacher that my oldest daughter had in second grade.
But thank you all for coming out. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to. Going on to 8.2 for an update on Sustainable CT.
Great. So Sustainable CT is a program that Tallinn's been a part of for, coming up on two years, April will be two years. There's a few people in this room that can probably speak to Sustainable CT a little bit better than I, including Brenda Fallusi and Heidi over there from, they both serve on our.
I'm Beth.
I'm sorry, I'm Beth as well. So there's been many expeditions in the room on Sustainable CT. But it was suggested that since it's coming up on the, we're about But it was suggested that since it's coming up on the, we're, we're about, let's say, a year and a half, maybe a year and three quarters into the program at this point, to kind of give an update on how things are going and sort of where we're at and maybe what some challenges are. I'm not sure who sort of wants to spearhead this, we can all sort of share our experiences with Sustainable CT. I will say, so the program itself is still in its infancy. There are only a few communities that have been certified at the silver accreditation level, there are more that are at the bronze level, and there actually isn't a gold level yet because it doesn't exist. They don't have enough points yet to get into the system. But we have, I guess, maybe who wants to go first? Maybe we could talk a little bit about the program.
Oh, thank you. I lost rock, paper, scissors. So Sustainable CT is a volunteer program. It recognizes communities within our town, or within our state. There's 93 communities, I believe, that are currently involved in the program out of 169. It is voluntary, which means that there's no push to actually join. But some of the things that they like to do is help us get funding, find grassroots efforts to get involved in some of these programs, get into resiliency and best practices, help build our economy, help make sure that we are staying attractive to our residents and be able to attract more residents into the program. There's 10 different areas of certification, which include everything from land and natural resources, clean and diverse transportation systems, healthy housing options. There's actually even a piece about equality in there and about making sure that we're cognizant of our language. The program is online, you can go to sustainablect.org and take a look at the account. Some of the benefits, it helps promote business, it helps promote good energy practices, healthy living, good quality of life. It can provide funding for grants, it does have a list of grants, you have to go in and apply for them yourself. There is training and even peer collaboration, so they do offer some programs that we can go and, you know, leave the community, like we all have time, and attend these programs. Some of the downfalls is, you know, you need to take the time to do this. The program, while it sounds like it's all in the system and it's easy to get points, you do have to follow their program and submit reports in the fashion that they want and on the topics they want. You can create some of your own, but the majority, you have to have at least something through each of the nine programs. And another thing that comes as a downfall for this is any existing programs that we're already doing, like the summer youth program, we don't get points for that because we've been doing that for over a year. I know. And there's a number of things like that. And again, the time commitments can be daunting. I don't know, what else did we want to cover?
Well, so I can say too, so I'm kind of coming into this at, you know, the 11th hour sort of in the sense that I just retired a few months ago and we've already been part of this program for almost two years. But I've heard from staff and I've heard, I've actually spoken to a representative from Sustainable CT who's a municipal outreach coordinator, and he actually lives in Tolland, so that's a whole run for us. But I spoke to him a little bit about the program and some of the misinformation that's out there about Sustainable CT. I was able to drill down on a few good pieces of information. So the first thing is, is that there's a community match grant that we are eligible for so long as we are in the program. And to maintain our status in the program, we have to meet quarterly, four times a year, as a staff group, including Brenda as well, talk about the progress of the program, see what initiatives we're trying to work towards to get points towards accreditation. But so long as we're in the program, we're eligible to apply for matching grants. The way the grant program works, speaking with the gentleman from Sustainable CT, is that it's almost like a crowdsourced funding type of a mechanism where we have a specific project that might cost money that will get us credit for Sustainable CT. We would apply through their website and I would say, hey, we have this idea, let's just use an example, we want to put some solar panels or have a solar farm or something like that. We would say the cost of that's gonna be about $20,000. The town or through its volunteers that donate would raise $10,000 and then Sustainable CT would match that $10,000 with another $10,000 to make it $20,000 to successfully fund the project. So it's a matching grant system through crowdsourced funding. But again, as long as we, we don't have to have bronze or silver accreditation to apply for these grants, as long as we're in the program, we can apply for these grants. And as Brenda alluded to, a lot of these categories have all sorts of different lookback periods. So there are some categories where it's only a year, and some are three years, some are five years, some are 10 years. So a lot of what we have already done is either a year or older, or we're teeter tottering on that year mark, so by the time we apply, it'll be over a year. So that kind of kills us on arrival there. So it's one of those things that's a little frustrating because we're always behind the eight ball with this timeframe, but it's not something that, I mean, as the council knows, we voted on this as a goal on our list of initiatives and it's something that with your recommendation, we will keep pursuing as long as you see value in staff pursuing these, these things. And as Brenda mentioned, there's a lot of good community, positive things that can come of this, such as transportation, economic development, people might be attracted to come to a community that, that engages in Sustainable CT. But as, as you said, it's not every community that's on this list and there's a reason for that, a lot of them don't have the staff capacity to take on this program, especially when you know that we have other things that are very high priorities, such as the POCD implementation, crumbling foundations, all sorts of high level things, Birch Grove, making sure we get that completed. So it's more, it's, it's an idea and we can keep, we can keep our program ongoing so long as we keep meeting. That's kind of what I wanted to say, I mean, I'm not sure.
Yeah, the, the other thing to bring up, you brought up the POCD, there might be some things that overlap here, but if we decide to go after something we're already doing, then that means we're adding a little bit more work. So if, like, let's say this COD that we're doing right now is something that we can get points for, but that also means we have to have the people on that commission go ahead and go through the accreditation process for it. So it's adding a little bit more work for something we're already doing. Sometimes it might not be a lot, but it could actually be quite a significant amount of paperwork at times. It brings focus to the towns and it brings focus to the things we highlight that we want to be able to attain. So it's like focusing our resources on equality or complete streets or energy efficiency or attracting businesses, those are all some of the things that are in there. So it's a good thing, but.
Well, it could be a useful exercise in the future for the council and should we want to continue pursuing this program to make perhaps two decisions in the future. One is if you think that the committee as it stands now with five staff people and Brenda representing the council, is that sufficient or do we want to open it up to anybody else, volunteers or anything like that? Right now, it's just staff and Brenda, that's one decision. And the other one is if you'd like to focus the staff through me about which of these you'd like to pursue, sort of like, again, sort of a mini goal setting of within Sustainable CT, to tell us what you think we should focus our time and energy on so that we're not just kind of grasping at straws and say, okay, there's a low hanging fruit, let's go after that, there's a low hanging fruit, let's go after that. If you want us to spend time getting one of those big fruit, then let us know and we'll go after it.
So you would go to sustainablect.org and look under actions and certifications? And that's for the list?
Actions.
Actions and certifications, yes.
Don't read that first gold, I'm sorry, that's my.
Nothing but gold works for the.
Yeah, and there are some, there are some things I told you guys over the weekend, but so that other people know, there are some points we're never gonna get, like revitalizing brownstones. We don't have brownstones, we can't revitalize them. And I don't think we want to build something to revitalize. So there's some points we're just not gonna get.
So Brenda, you said that this helps promote business and funding life, how? How does it?
Hi, doing some of these actions to focus. So some of the actions might be, one of them is to find out how we are communicating with the general population. And some of those communications might be helping bring businesses out, or helping bring consumers into the town or capturing people as their footprint. So that may be something we identify. The parts in thriving local economy, there's whole, one whole action area that has points under it for helping create a thriving local economy. There's another for strategic and inclusive public services, healthy housing, and inclusive and equitable community impact. So those are all things that, you know, we've been discussing on the weekend.
So that's a good thing, if we do these tasks.
We get points and we get recognition. They also do pictures of the week up online, we can end up getting some free advertising from it, from our town. And again, it helps us focus and it helps us learn best practices. I know you've been to some forums, were there any that were, you want to highlight that were beneficial?
I just went to one training.
One training, okay.
So Heidi, from your perspective, you don't have to get up. Okay. Value for the amount of time that you're spending.
So frankly, I feel stuck right now. So I'm the lead staff person, so we just went through this two-year community process to update our plan of conservation development. In the past two weeks, in the next, next two weeks, I'm going to the various boards and commissions and saying, okay, what do we want to work on this year? So if you take all the things our boards and commissions have already said they want to work on, and you take all the actions in Sustainable Connecticut, a few match up, but not a lot. For example, we do want to update our open space plan, that's something we would get points for, but a lot of the actions don't align. What I would strongly encourage you to do is what Brenda said, read through all the actions. And if they resonate with you, then maybe that does become my priority in the next year and we hold on the POCD stuff for a year. But right now, they, they don't really match up and so, so that's our dilemma on figuring out how to prioritize.
I think the POCD is definitely the priority, you know? That to me is like a driver of, of the economy and planning and zoning for us. So I think, in my opinion, you know, there's six, seven, minus Kurt on the side road. He's never gonna live this down, by the way. You know, who would say, you know, the POCD, if anything matches up to the POCD, we'll take it. But like, I wouldn't want you to focus on something over here, in my opinion, and delay something that could, you know, fix a, an ouch that we need fixed, that would bring in more business. That's my personal opinion. So, and I'm just concerned because there's a lot that has to be done right now. And I know a lot is all on you, and I know Lisa, you're part of it also, and Bev is part of it too, but I believe, pardon me if I'm wrong, the lion's share is kind of falling on to Heidi and.
Well, frankly, we haven't done much yet. I've gotten this 25 points and tonight, five more, because last night's training, I get five points more. So we really haven't done much because we're looking at the tasks and some are big things, like do we want to have electric charging stations? That's above my pay grade to make those decisions. So, so it is a lot of work, but it also is a big decision of do we want to start doing these things? Are they important to us? If it is, we prioritize it. If you look at it and maybe not, then I think we need some of that.
There's kind of like three options. We, we take a look at all the actions and certifications and decide what we want to do. We just stay in the program so we can take advantage of any seminars or training that may come up or, and the matching. Or we just back off and stop having our quarterly meetings. I mean, our quarterly meetings could only be five minutes. We got together, we talked, we gave an update.
I mean, I think, I think it sounds like a great idea, at least examine it. Along with you, Brenda, I think that it's something that, you know, for the time commitment that we have right now, I mean, I'm, I'm not fully informed on it, but if it's something, there's a minimal time commitment where we can gain access to some of the training, gain access to some of the benefits, and then look to see if any of the goals that they have align with our goals, then that's something that I think is, is something that would worthwhile to examine. Not saying that we're gonna fully commit to it at this point, but at least seeing, you know, what we can align. And have that as sort of a goal, to see wherever we can get things to match up with the Sustainable CT and with our POCD and with our, our goals as a, as a council overall, I think that's a great idea.
I think our next meeting is January 11?
Uh, it's soon, or maybe even February, so November, January, yeah.
February month.
One, one of my suggestions would be though, is that if we're looking for, looking down the road is possibly opening up to the community for volunteers. Because I think it's something that if we get volunteers, one, it takes some of the burden off the people that we have here, where it's not the staff that's carrying the full brunt. Plus, it also gets us more community engagement so we can see what the community actually, what they feel, what they value, what they, what they think is important, so that they can help guide us as far as where to go along with these Sustainable CT goals.
So some of the items on my perspective, especially with the energy, because I worked for so many years with the Energy Pass Force, we were ahead of the curve of some towns, but we can't submit anything because we already did it. We already did perform the contracting, we already did, we benchmarked all of our buildings in a different, you know, we used.
Can we break something and then repair it?
That's literally what it is, breaking and redoing something we did for something.
And Mike, there's, there's no like.
And some of our youth programs, with the summer theater, it, it's like, we, we were ahead of the curve in some ways, and I'm really proud of my department for doing, but it's like, we'll reel it all back and try.
We're too good for our own good.
Yeah, and, and there are other issues that I personally would like to work on and see supported in the community, finish Birch Grove, you know, so.
Kind of gotta do that.
Yeah. And it doesn't feel good not to be able to succeed at this, you know?
We don't like.
We're like, why can't we get this done? And it, I think it's, it's how they're setting the criterias and, you know, oh, you can't do that, that was a year ago, you did it two years ago, you can't come in.
And in all fairness, it works for a number of communities. A number of communities nearby have done it, it works for them. I, I'm having a hard time making it work for this community.
Because we're so far advanced in some of the areas than other communities are, which speaks volumes for us, but doesn't help us get points.
So having the Program's Municipal Outreach liaison living in Tolland, I think is a great asset, especially if we open it up to volunteers, because you know we're gonna be calling that person, so they help us out.
Yeah, and is there, is there, was there any feedback when you spoke to him on getting points for any of the stuff that we had, like?
Yeah, we actually, so one thing, it's not part of your materials tonight, but Heidi was great, she provided us, this is a chart of all the points that are possible, I think that if you count them all up, it's like a thousand total points. We, currently, I think we have 30, you said?
As of tonight, possibly 30, but we'll lose half of them in a year.
So that's, that's.
Then you lose them too.
Yeah, yeah, for one year, looking back.
It's a whole look back.
They're on the high, they're not making it easy, no.
I mean, this is something we can give feedback to, this gentleman.
Absolutely, yeah, but I, I wasn't sure if there's wiggle room, I think that was coming up earlier about, you know, are we sure it's a year? Can it be a year and six months? But I think having this guy in town is gonna be great, because we can show, hey, here's our frustration, you're seeing it from, from firsthand from.
Yeah, from the town in which you live.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how much leeway there is, but I think that would be good to, that person can see from our point of view what it looks like and how frustrating it can be, because like Heidi just said, you're gonna lose half those points that we just worked so hard to get, you know, what's the point?
Yeah, yeah, let's tap that resource.
Yeah.
What, is that the list, Heidi, to your point, is that, is that the list of all the things that are on it?
This, that's not user friendly, their website is much more user friendly.
It breaks it down by their various components.
I mean, I just pulled it up and they have a great handbook on it as well.
I was just wondering what was easier for, for the council to look at in terms of.
The website.
So I think we need to have that as our task, you know, so within, before the end of January, take a look at this website and see if there's anything on there that kind of piques your interest and says, either something that would match up with one of the goals that we just identified, or something that, hey, we might be able to do this and get something for the buck, but we have to just be very cognizant of the fact that POCD, yeah.
You can't tap on our staff.
Right, no, we have to, we have to make sure that we're staying focused on the things that are the absolute true priorities, which is, you know, developing 195 and all of the things that we have on there. So we don't want to add, hey, let's put some electric charging stations in, uh, DPW over there, there are some people here happy with it.
If we have car batteries, like with jumper cables, is that?
Right, you know, we can jar it, so.
Like, and did you have some places that have electric car stations, but they're on company property? You know, some, you know, like.
Probably not, doesn't count. We gotta get them up at Big Y, right? That's right.
You'd have to put it like a town hall or something, but.
Well, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, we could do another rabbit hole with this and, you know, but it's, but, I mean, I think that it's something that's definitely worth looking at, where you're going, again, building into the public-private cooperation on these things and, you know.
I wouldn't mind opening up to the community for volunteers, but my only concern is, again, that people are gonna love it, latch onto it, want to do a lot, and then that's gonna get thrown back to these lovely ladies here who will probably make voodoo dolls of us.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah.
They'll definitely be good for us to look through, because we're not even just scrolling through some of the points. Like I said, when I actually did Mike about providing effective community communications, that could possibly fall underneath one of the goals we discussed on Sunday about improving how social media is utilized by all the boards and commissions and groups to promote public events. And so, yeah, I would definitely, definitely encourage...
Let's look for some good marriages, right? So let's look for some good marriages.
Yeah, something that, you know, if it's not gonna be a high priority this year, into the two-year term for the council, we're seeing it as something that maybe next year, as long as we're keeping active and going for those points, that is something that we can try and align with. So that we can put the first, the primary focus on the first year.
Yeah, one other suggestion is, I mean, we can look at these for some great ideas, see what other communities are doing, because their information's been submitted, and then just copy it and, you know, get any points, but it's something that's already been out there. It's a great idea for something, maybe, oh, I didn't think of it that way. Maybe we should add this on while we're doing it. So it's a great resource, if nothing else, too.
Good. And there's two other things I learned in terms of the accreditation process. So in order to gain even the bronze level accreditation, you have to do at least one thing in each of the 10 categories. So if there's a category that we are, we just simply can't do anything in, I think we could probably make something work in each category. But once you gain accreditation, it expires in three years. You have to re-up every three years as well. And that means a whole new 200 points every three years.
I'm gonna keep my comments inside on this, but...
That's, yeah, conversation.
I'm gonna keep my comments inside.
The good thing about the, they've always said that they're very open to feedback from the communities that are participating. So that's something that we could always say, hey, so provide some feedback.
Is it possible, maybe we invite this gentleman who lives here to a council meeting or to, yeah, have a discussion about this further, so we can, you know, and maybe, so, you know, the last meeting in January, or that kind of, but, you know, we could review the website, as Tammy said, and then provide some feedback about this point system, because that, that resonates with me at the moment.
Homework item number one, review sustainablect.org, come up with a list. Brenda will probably like have the whole thing for us, like she can probably like have, that'll be tied and color-coded it, you know? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, is there anything else? Before we move on, do we have everything? You guys? Lisa, you're not here like, mm.
I'm just like, mm.
Bite the bun, I know, I get it. We're gonna move on to eight point three then, appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions.
I think there were three that came in?
Yes.
Does everybody have the list?
I read it, so yes. I don't have a copy of it, but yes. I read it.
Yeah, we read.
I read it from the second, I'm good.
So I guess I would entertain a motion to reappoint the following people to the Light Review Committee for tonight's meeting, Carol Stocks, Crandy, and Cliff Ashang, for a term of January 1st, 2020 to January 1st, 2023, as well as reappointing, actually, it's the second, yes, okay, something like that.
I'll move for a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes.
Moving right along, I had to create a motion to reappoint the following persons to the Ethics Commission at tonight's meeting, Marie Salaf of Southern Cook Road, for a term 1231, 2019 to 1231, 2012.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstaining? Motion carries.
The other comment was, I was gonna ask if Mike would be willing to send out an e-blast for the current vacancies, if possible, and that was, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I know you have a vacancies email, but perhaps encourage, now that we officially have Lure and myself going through the vetting process, maybe encouraging residents to know that they can reach out to us directly to begin that vetting process.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to nine, old business. For nine point one, it was brought to my attention that in the Tallinn, in the Town Council Rules of Procedure, at the bottom of our footnote there for public hearing items, that the Order of Operations included a vote for public hearing items at number four, and that we did not regularly adhere to that. And to be honest with you, when we looked at it, it didn't match what's in the charter. The charter says that we may have a straw poll during a meeting, not that we have to, kind of a thing. So all that we changed, all that is changed in this so far for the rules of procedure is changing the footnote item to number four, from vote for public, vote of public for public hearing items, said that fast three times, to straw poll for public hearing items may be taken. So this here is really just to change that.
Comformed with what the, what the charter requires?
So I have the charter, so Charter, Section 4-5, Public Hearings, has the statement, after such public hearings, a straw poll of the registered voters and non-registered voters of the town present may be taken on each issue and may constitute a public expression of opinion for the guidance of the council. So this new, this updated wording, adding the word straw poll rather than vote, mirrors the charter, and may be taken, that will be taken. Also, to note, Order of Business number 13 changes the chairperson rather than chairman. That's the other change as well.
Oh, that's all right, sorry. So just for my own clarification, it just means that, in order to have a straw poll, does somebody have to request it? Or would I just say, do we want to do a straw poll? Like, how would something like that? Because it's may, it's not, we are, and is it typically a straw poll is requested? Or there's certain items that we have to do a straw poll on, or we have to, no, I'm sorry, not a straw poll. We have to do a individual vote.
Because that's us, not them.
Yeah, I know. But I don't know, like, from a straw poll perspective, do, can anybody say, I want a straw poll of the P O C D?
Yeah, I think it's at the discretion of the council.
Can the crowd say it too, or no?
It's important to know that it's a non-binding straw poll.
Right, it's not.
But the charter is solid on who requests the straw poll. I think if we created a policy, or if at least had some sort of a sense in the meeting about what the proper procedure is and that we follow that, at least that would provide consistency. So if you want to say a counselor requests a straw poll...
I think that that's more consistent with what, you know, looking at the historical aspects of Robert's rules, where, I mean, it does specifically address it, but at least it says that it's at the chair's discretion or at the request of one of the councilors.
That's what I thought. That's what I was reading in Robert's rules, that it's a chair's discretion or anybody can request it up here.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair, that we follow that.
Would you like me to add the words, may be taken at a counselor's discretion, or at the council's discretion?
Not unless everybody, not unless it's, you know, it's, we're following Robert's rules, right? So it's...
Yeah, right.
I would say it's gonna be entirely situational. I mean, I know Mike is gonna be generally in the audience nine to 10 out of 10 times, so if we need a straw poll, we'll get at least one vote in one way.
Mike, what would you, what is, yeah, what's your straw poll? Mike, Mike, what's your input on that? What's your straw poll on that?
Nope, he's good as...
He abstains, okay.
But, yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's entirely at the discretion of the council, if they kind of read the room, that if there are members that have been used to being gauged in straw polls in the past, that it might be appropriate to provide that opportunity just to gauge the temperature of the room.
Okay, cool. I'm good with that. If there are any other...
So do you need a motion to do that, or is it just sort of about...
Okay. Because we originally motioned to approve the rules of procedure, so this would be to amend.
So I would, I would so move to amend the rules as presented by Ms. Rooney.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. All right, gets us to number 10, report of the town manager.
Okay. So, a little bit of a lengthy report tonight. So wanted to touch on a few past events and a couple of upcoming events, and then end with the materials that are on your desks tonight. So past events, we had our goal settings session on the 8th, which went very well. I'll admit, I'm working on the minutes from that meeting, so that we can share the goals publicly. I haven't finished them yet. I should have them done tomorrow. But working on them and just kind of going through my chicken scratch and making sure everything was properly accounted for from that meeting. December 6th, there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony hosted by Access Housing in Harper Place. I saw a few of the people in this room there. We had a tour of the new units, and I thought it was absolutely beautiful in there. It was really nice. We saw some model units, as well as our senior center employee's mother, one of the residents there. And that was really nice to see her home. Sustainable C T, we talked about that earlier tonight, so I won't touch on that, except that I had a call with that gentleman, so I already mentioned that. I also went to a CROG Municipal Services Committee meeting earlier today in Hartford. And then a couple of upcoming events, Tammy already mentioned, we have a health district meeting in Coventry on December 12th. There's a retirement party for one of our resident troopers, Alan Baylin, December 17th at 12:00 PM. Senior Center Birthday Lunch, December 19th at 12:00 PM. I'm also personally gonna be meeting with the Cub Scouts that evening. Marking calendars, our next town council meeting will begin at 6:30 PM on January 14th, 2020, with an executive session. So that's, we're starting early that day, 6:30, for an executive session.
Yeah, I've got it down.
Yep. Pending litigation for that. And so let's, to talk a little bit about what's on your desk this evening. So as part of my town manager's report tonight, I've included two packets of material in front of you. The first is my proposed five-year capital budget. This is the first opportunity and issuance for you to see the fiscal year 2021 to 2025 plan. The way we, this is being presented in the same way that Mr. Wordbear has presented the capital budget in the past via the town manager's report for the first look. And I wanted to point out, for a good snapshot, some snapshot summary of the projects that I'm recommending funding for, please see page two of my memo, that shows you sort of your top nine, although it's not all-inclusive, but that's your top nine items from the capital budget this year. And before we move too far away from the capital budget, the second package from the fire chief, Chief LaTelle, which details out asset information from the fire department. To note, as part of the five-year plan, design and construction of space needs for the fire department is forecasted. So this material in the red folder in front of you introduces you to the potential cost of construction. And year one of the plan funds $100,000 for a scope of work design for the actual construction project for the fire station. We have a plug-in number at the moment, which my memo details. It's probably not the final number. That number's gonna be guided by the space needs study that is in year one of the capital budget. So I'll leave it at that for now. If you have specific questions, I know Lisa's here, a few other members of the audience. This was, the intent for tonight was not to get too deep into it, because we're gonna be talking about this over the next month or so. But if you have any, you know, first look questions, feel free to ask.
I was gonna say, not so much an in-depth question, but I think a request that would be good for the entire council. I know I was talking to Tim briefly, was doing some site visits that be a more physical understanding. There's a lot of terminology that I'm not necessarily familiar with, so it'd be good for, I'm sure for those who are familiar and those who aren't, to kind of get a second look at what, or even a first look at what some of those facility needs are and what that translates to for our public safety staff and volunteers.
That's great.
I did that when I was first elected, and it was just me and Bill Echols that did it, and it was very informative. Took the, Chief LaTelle, it's always hard for me to say that, but he took us to every station and went through everything. Like, we saw the trucks, we saw all the equipment, we saw all the stations, all the issues that they had, everything. So especially with the firehouse coming up with our term here, I think, you know, it would definitely be beneficial. I'm sure you're very familiar with them, but for the rest of everybody else... You know, to definitely, I think it's a different perspective, though, when you're going for this, because John really goes over, this is why this, and this is why that, you know? So putting that different hat on might be good, but for the rest of you guys, we should, if we can get that on the books...
And I'd recommend Public Works as well, you know?
Yes. Yes. I think they're definitely gonna need to be different days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so, real quick, so on the, and I might be behind the times, so excuse my ignorance here. So the plan is to build an additional firehouse, is that what it was standing?
The plan, so no, the, so the first, year one of the plan funds a study. Year two of the plan is the actual, what the study recommends as construction, but not to, it's gonna bring all three of the firehouses up to code?
Got it.
And make sure they have the space they need. And if there's any issues with any infrastructure or foundation issues, that will be addressed by you as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Sure, I just wanted to...
Yeah, well, and it will be confusing, because John does talk in there about creating a new fire training center and fire station.
Right.
And that's kind of multifaceted. It's something that he's been talking about for a while.
Right.
Also, because the fire training center is on what is technically zoned commercial land.
Right.
You know, there's always the idea, or there has been the idea, that if we at some point could build a new facility for the training in the fire department, we could put business there, you know, which would be tax revenue generating instead of, you know, net, net, zero, because we're using it.
They form an understanding with $100,000 before.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And also, part of your materials, I forgot to mention, so there's, there's also materials from the school department as well, the board event. They, you actually have a separate, this evening, we have a color-coded version of it that's a little bit more legible than the one that's in your packet tonight.
Yeah.
So this, this one, this one looks pretty good. But the, this is, this is from the board event. This is not what's being recommended by the manager. So if you read the report, you'll see it's a bit, it's a bit, yeah.
Homework assignment number two, spend some time with the capital budget.
And it's the full five-year plan, so yeah, obviously, year one and two looks a little bit more clear than years three, four, five. But everything, the point of a five-year plan is that you want to see the assets as they move down the line, and there are no surprises as we get to the out-years.
It should be something that we're all eager to look at with our desires for a five-year plan, so this is...
It's wrong, it's coming sound for classes.
Yeah, it is. That's okay, though. It's actually, it's good to look at the five-year scope for this. And when Mike actually comes and does the presentation, just for all of the new people on the board, the department heads usually come, and we'll talk through their ask and why they're asking and what they're asking for. And they're always very receptive to questions, to provide information and that. So take some time, get real friendly with your, your capital projects, and have some questions, and they'll give you answers.
And the public hearing is situated February 13th. That's, I believe, our first meeting in February, so that's when the public hearing will be.
And is that when I will be here, or will it be then prior in January?
Yeah, that's the first, yeah. I mean, we could, if...
That's your second meeting. It's capital, it's discussed.
Okay, definitely. All right, so we have them up.
And in terms of town manager's report, that's it. Happy holidays, happy new year. We'll see you in January.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
Just one other question, I'm sorry. So is this plan, is this a rolling five-year plan? So was this based on what Steve had previously put together in terms of, not that I saw it. I was just wondering, were there overlaps based on what Steve wanted to do, right? So the reason I bring this up was somebody approached me about old cat hole and what we did there, and was that gonna be redone, or was that in the five-year plan going forward? Not that I necessarily wanted to have that discussion today, but I didn't know if that was part of your, this five-year plan.
Sure. Well, so I think there's, there's definitely some seeds that Steve had planted before he retired. I'll say that I met with each department one-on-one, so these, these assets that are detailed out as capital assets for the... They've been presented to me directly as needs of the department, and I've gone through, we pushed some things, we've taken some things off the list, so this is my recommended five-year plan, whereas perhaps in the past, Steve had things on there that I've taken off, or vice versa, that he took off.
Yeah, no, no, I wasn't trying to say it's a Steve's plan. I'm fully aware of it. What I was just trying to understand was, you know, are we gonna get questions of, you know, from the public or somebody comes by, you know, looks at it and says, hey, you know, I thought that was on the previous town manager's five-year plan. Was there a, and I don't know that for sure. I'm just trying to understand a little bit better, that's why I asked the question.
In theory, where Steve left the five-year plan, everything should have shifted over one year.
Right.
But some things got moved around for priority sake or due to urgency. If there's any sort of public safety needs, those go to the top of the list, because we don't want to have anybody unsafe or anything like that. So let's get skyrocketed up to that.
That's fair, thank you. I appreciate that.
And as far as old cat hole, I'm sure, oh, let me see, I can get it right, and then you can tell me if I'm wrong. So they skin-coated it, because they ran out of time.
Correct, that's all this is...
And we received a grant for the majority of the money of it. So they will be fixing it, pulling, they'll be milling it and redoing it in the spring forever.
Right, but you won't see it in the capital budget, because it's typically from a few years ago, which is...
Right, so somebody approached me who lives that development, you know, the developers on either side of it, right? So somebody approached me last Saturday when I was out and said, hey, what are they doing with old cat hole? I know we skin-coated it. Wasn't out of wasteland money, you know? I didn't want to get out of, you know, the rabbit hole with them. And I said, I would ask at the earliest opportunity about, in terms of what was going on.
So in the spring, but it won't be listed in the capital budget, because it's a past budget.
All right, very good.
Did you have to find it in those questions?
I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I was a bottle of maul back into it, wasn't I?
Anyone else have questions for Mike? I read the town manager's report, and I just had a quick clarification on the assessors' report. It said that there are three houses that are going on the 2018 grant list, and then the other 14 are gonna be in the 2019 grant list. Is that ones that were done after 7/1, 2019? Is that mine?
That was, I believe, previous, so if I remember correctly, I'm trying to just pull it up quickly, but Jason had told me that three houses were brought up to, they were fixed with the Crown League Foundation issue two fiscal years ago.
Okay.
Was it 14/17? You said 14, I think.
It said that there were three in 2018. It said that there were three in twenty eighteen, and then that would be fourteen on the twenty nineteen.
So that, that's, that's looking back still, so we don't have what's, what's the twenty twenty number yet. So that's still retro, yeah, that's retroactive years. But yes, we don't know how many are going to be ready for twenty twenty yet.
Okay, and Lisa, congrats again on the budget presentation award.
Combined effort.
Well, congrats to everyone who was involved, please pass on our congrats. And the public safety person, Mimi, that resigned, do they already have a backfill or are we advertising this?
We're advertising, yep. That's, that's posted on the town website, I forget if the period is already closed, do you have a know? But I think we're, we're currently recruiting for that, so.
And the same question for, I was really sad to see Assistant Chief Doug. So are they looking to backfill that? I'm glad he's still staying involved.
I, I would think, I mean, I would assume that the chief has a plan for that, that, that's a volunteer role, so I think he's got a different promotion structure there. I'm not sure how he's gonna fill it, but I'm sure he's looking into it, and he certainly needs the help down there.
Yeah, I know, that's why, you know, I hope that they can find somebody to fill that role, keeping him on as an asset, but getting somebody else in there to help with John would be great. On the, um, on the public works side, I asked this before, I'm gonna, I don't remember though if we, if we actually figured it out, but, are they gonna fix, I know they're gonna fix the road where they did the work for the water main, do we know when they're gonna do that? Heidi, that's not a good phase.
I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, because it's like a hot mess over there now, and it was nice and smooth before, so. I know that was on the list to, that they were gonna fix it, I just don't know if we know when they're gonna fix it. Okay, I wanted to point out that the letters to the city program has started, mailboxes are at Talon Rec, Talon Library, Birch Grove, Talon Intermediate, Talon Post Office. And then the last question that I had, Lisa, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this one, but on the town clerk's, clerk's monthly report, um, the differences between September twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen and the year-to-date numbers for nineteen twenty and eighteen nineteen were like significantly higher year over year.
For what area?
Um, town clerk's monthly report is a recording fees, conveyance taxes, um, town council, I think that's town council, TC preservation, town preservation copies miscellaneous, like twenty eighteen we're at twenty-five thousand and this year we're at almost forty-four thousand. This is the last one. Do we have any idea what's, listen, I'm, I'm happy that we're getting more revenue, but do we have any idea what's driving the increased revenue? Like the year-to-date numbers went from like ninety-four thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I can, I can ask the town clerk, but certainly it looks like obviously that there's been more activity in land sales and then property sales for the conveyance and the recording fees that would go along with them, along with marriage licenses, anything else that would be a recording fee. But I can certainly ask Sheila specifically if she has any other information. It just looks like things are a little.
I know that when the interest rate's dropping, that a lot of people did refinancing just on people that were in the, in the business. And, and so that every time that you do something like that, there's a recording fee that they have to pay. Because I just didn't, I knew that, yeah, so some of that money I, I just contributed, so.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to follow up, so the administrative secretary too in the fire department composition closes December twelfth, so it's still open for a few more days.
Two.
Two days. And then also to the directive that came out of the goal setting, which hasn't been drawn out yet, but just to put it out there, we're gonna put an e-blast out regarding if anybody in the community would like to volunteer to send, submit photographs of town events that we could perhaps publish for credit and things like that, but we're gonna put the word out, I believe tomorrow, about if anybody wants to sort of be like an unofficial town photographer.
I like that. Are, is there anybody else?
On, on the open positions, so those are posted on the town website? Do we get, and I'm just asking generally, do we get a lot of, we don't hire somebody to go out and like, do you put them on Indeed and those sorts of sites as well?
Yeah, so indeed, I, I know we recently had two full-time positions that were, one was an executive secretary, and I forgot what the other one position exactly was, the title of it. But, but we had forty-something applicants for one, and over twenty-five or so for the other. Yeah, so we do get good turnout for, for positions. Part-time might be a little more difficult depending on people's schedules and things. Obviously, those are, those are only three positions that I've dealt with so far. And actually, when we hired the assistant planner, we also had probably about fifteen or so, no, it was a little bit less, but.
Four.
Four tries. But we, we really struggled.
Yeah, I was just curious, is, you know, do we get a lot of interest in, in those types of positions?
Yeah, in those professional positions that have perhaps, um, organizations, we would go to them and post on those sites.
Okay, great, so we do use like Indeed and all those, okay, great, okay, thank you.
All right, we move on to eleven, adoption minutes. I've read in Robert's rules that you don't even have to actually approve the minutes.
Not in Robert's rules, but we're required by our charter.
By the charter, okay, I wasn't sure, okay, so do we have to do them individually, or can we, do, I think, can we lump them, like is?
Yes.
Yes, all right, we're lumping those three together, it was moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any staying? Pass those minutes. Correspondence to council, Brenda?
We have none.
So I technically did have one that I'll have to forward on, it was actually, I don't know if it counted, was a response to me reaching out to Professor Park about presentation. So she just responded saying, you know, thank you, and thank the council members for attending. She says it's a great opportunity for students to work on a real-world project. Students learn through communicating with potential users of the site that they're designing for. They appreciated the great partnership that we've been able to build with the town and the many residents that have a strong interest in the plans that students develop. So I can forward that along to Lisa and Mike. It was just a quick response that I just noticed was sent to me when I reached out to her to thank her for all we're able to do.
Perfect. Uh, next that gets us to the chairman's report, um, so the liaisons for the board of ed, just about everybody got back to me and picked months. So you're the only one who didn't, so you got what was left, which I think you might be okay. But, um, January and February are going to be Lou, um, March and April are de facto rental. We can maybe switch to somebody. May is Kurt, June and, June is Bob, July and August is Steve, September is Bob, October and November are John, and Kurt is December. So if anybody wants to switch a month, reach out, switch a month. They are the day after us, so they're the Wednesday of the same week as town council.
Well, the, unless the Wednesday is the first of the month, it's, so it's the second and the fourth, which is ninety percent of the time the day after.
Wait, I'm just trying to make sure that it doesn't, uh, because I was just saying about Birch Grove where, you know, it's, I mean, it's Tuesdays.
Yeah, I think they're Tuesdays and Thursday.
For now, it's gonna get a lot more now.
Um, but I will send something out at the beginning of the month to remind you, hey, it's your month, see you on Wednesday. So I attended quite a few things, I went to the Parker Place ribbon cutting. As of now, there are six or seven units that are rented. There are several openings, and I just wanted to encourage anybody out there who has an elderly relative, still considering dependent living, to apply. I'd really love to see it filled with as many Talon people as possible.
Especially veterans too.
And veterans, the two. There's two set aside for veterans, yes. I can say that though.
We welcome everybody who moves in as residents of Talon.
There are thirty-seven units, um, two of them are two-bedroom and maybe five of them are single-bedroom. They're all configured a little differently because it's actually pretty cool, and you and your kids went there, they converted their classrooms, like, Becky's mom lives in what used to be Mrs. Cassidy's classroom, you know, because my kid was in that classroom. And then Mrs. Grinnell's classroom is in the, the blue hallway, you know, like it, it's, they're all configured a little differently because of the layout of the classrooms and that, so it's definitely neat. But I was also asked, they are looking for gently-used furnishing room areas. If anybody has anything that they have, holiday season, you're getting a new something or other, they could really use some gently-used furniture. Um, the stuff a cruiser was this weekend, it was really successful. Uh, I visited the Hicks Victorian Christmas with Mike and actually, and somebody else was there too. Spoke to the chair of their board, and the museum is in need of some maintenance work, and we were just kind of brainstorming fundraising opportunities. So if anybody has anything in mind for an opportunity for them, they used to do, I'm hoping they're gonna start doing a concert series in the summer again. I was talking to her for a while, and we talked about doing like a museum crawl, like, um, like apps and drinks, kind of maybe working with the ad commissioner or something, or whoever about local stuff to do like a museum crawl and try to get people to kind of crowd, crowdsource fundraising for the museum. And then they were hoping to bring back their craft classes that they used to do for the school-aged kids that kind of died off. A lot of parents weren't finding the information even though it's in the digital backped kind of thing. So they were looking at opportunities or ideas from people on how to kind of raise money to fix up the museum. The tree lighting, there were quite a few people that attended, it was a great ceremony, um, the magicals were there, singing carols, there was hot cocoa, it was great, it was really cold. Some blood slivers thrown under. I did get home in time to see Santa though, um, and the firemen, which was great. Um, upcoming, the seniors, uh, notables band is having their annual holiday concert at two P M at the art center over here on the fifteenth. Um, the board of ed has a budget workshop on the eighteenth at seven P M in the library program room. On December twenty-eighth, you are a hockey fan, Rage Robotics is partnering with the Hartford Wolf Pack for fundraising. You can buy tickets to the Wolf Pack game on their site, it's fifteen dollars a ticket. Deadline for purchasing the tickets is twelve twenty-three, and four dollars of every ticket that is sold goes directly to Rage Robotics. And if they, I was told today, if they sell a certain amount of tickets, they get to have their robot drop the puck. So they are in need of funding, they lost their major sponsor, um, not fully yet, but over the next couple of years, they are, they're reducing their amount of funding drastically. So after Christmas, anybody want to get together with me for a happy game? Let's go to a happy game.
I'll actually be there, but I'm doing box seats, it's my birthday the, the next night, so, but I already told Tony I was gonna donate a ticket, so if anybody wants to go, I am donating a ticket by purchasing one to support Rage, so.
There you go. Um, I did go to the Wannett Park presentation, and it was interesting, a lot of them were great, if money was no object. And one young lady had an awesome idea, which I think hopefully the conservation committee capitalizes on, and that is selling memorial bricks, doing a fundraiser to, um, raise money for some of the walks there by doing memorial bricks. I was wondering what our part is in developing any kind of this senior park thing with consideration of our open space commitment. I know we have a commitment to open space, we know it's, it's a valued resource in town, it's already there, but by, I don't know what our level of commitment is to doing anything with that, so maybe that's a conversation for.
So the conservation commission wants to digest everything, and I think what we're probably going to do is to come up with a management plan and with some short, medium, and long-term solutions, look at the funding we have that doesn't require bonding, look at possible grants through AARP. And I, I think we're gonna piece something together, but I can't promise anything yet.
I understand, I think anything that you can pull together would be great, I'd be very interested in seeing it, I thought it was, it was a great presentation.
I walked away with really practical things that we, we can start accomplishing.
You picked from kind of like, you kind of cherry picked from everybody's, and there were some, I was like, that one doesn't look too bad. That one's not gonna happen, that one would be okay.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're very eclectic and very, yeah, imaginative and creative, and I know the process is ongoing, even, I think tomorrow night's meeting for the conservation commission will be really good because I think part of their agenda is setting their twenty-twenty goals, so I know they have another park that they're under consideration, that they're developing the, behind the dist office for the mountain bike, I think that's an ongoing goal, so they've got a few open space opportunities that they're exploring.
Um, my daughter actually went with me to it, and she was saying, um, there were a couple of presentations that had very different courses, like the, the red, the yellow, and the green, and she says, you know, I know I'm twenty, and to me that would be great, she goes, but I think it's also good to think of the senior populace as a varied populace that might enjoy more than just one straight ADA track around, you know, having those different levels was, um, she was really, she really liked that, she thought it was really cool. I had my first chair hour, uh, we had three people, four if we count Andrew, who stopped by to talk to me for a while. Andrew was great, um, I hope more people will take part of it going forward, we had some good conversation. Hartford Foundation for Giving is having their next meeting on January twenty-seventh, um, they're creating their application for the advisory committee volunteers, and they have a working list of the five oh one C threes in Talon that they're gonna be contracting with. So they are going to be starting to hopefully pull together their advisory board, which I told the lady at Hicks about too, because they're five oh one C threes. Um, it's a good opportunity for them. I had a little plug for everybody to remember to read your Bloom Shapiro report, I'm sure Lisa's gonna be going over that shortly. And I spoke to Ron Thomas at C C N, yes, about the Commission on Property Tax Reform, and gonna be getting a lot more information on that. So that is it for me for now. And, does anybody have any questions?
You sure that's it?
I'm pretty sure for now. Couldn't find anything else. That gets to communications and petitions from council persons, does anybody have anything that they would like to ask or get on this panel?
Only that I sent a couple of communications after the goal setting to Mike and you, I know I rambled a little bit in one of them, but I kind of, I would say tacked on more goals, but just incorporated some of the discussions that after the four and a half hours I knew no one wanted to keep sitting and talking about, so. Just trying to keep in mind, so Steve Workner's presentations at the end of his term is kind of as a, as a manager was, um, kind of doing more public-private partnerships for the infrastructure, most notably the bridges as gateways to our community, trying to see if there's ways to, either work with the state to improve them aesthetically, or find ways to make that into an adopt-a-spot region where basically we could improve that and make it look more like a nicer gateway into Talon versus what we currently see at times, and the, the night or day. Trying to lose anything else.
Like chickens, is it a frog?
Possibly, I mean, metal, metal structure, just gas.
Or, you know, with the new bridge where they did the beehive effect down there, bridge there.
Yes, I would love that. Well, actually, I was thinking about that, um, after you sent it, and one of our goals was the public-private partnership. So if we pursue that under like the public, because I really liked that thing that Steve said too, if we could make that bridge area more of a.
And even some of our other bridges and tunnels.
Sixty, yeah, you know, like, uh, he, he mentioned that it's just at the gateway really to the town, and it's just block. You know, and the ones that have been done that, you know, if we could do a public-private.
Right, I mean, there's a lot of different ways, I mean, talking with, uh, with Mayor Stewart on some of the ideas that she had, uh, you know, with, with the, is even doing it as like an art offering, where you get artists to actually design certain things. And then you can also get state and federal funding for that because that was considered an art project, and so it's just a, a win-win situation, so.
Yeah, I think in including that too, not only just sixty-eight, I know they gotta do the best one to start with, but, you know, the gateway to our high school, and going to the high school and middle school, the possibility of doing, like we do with Crystal Pete for the mural against that backdrop, something around Crystal, I just like, um, cider mill. I know it's probably more complicated because it's a, it goes underneath.
It's a roadway, yeah.
Yeah, it's more of a roadway, but some sort of mural on the, I just, because right now it's honestly just graffiti. And when you have a mural or something positive like that, it deters graffiti and also highlights a pretty core avenue to get to like the lodge, to get to the cemeteries, to get to other parts of the community, so just beautifying that area.
Speaking of the lodge, that little brown sign that's on the cider mill connection, that's like so, um, deteriorated, you can't even read it, and it doesn't really give people, show the words.
The actual one?
Yeah, the actual, that's on, that's on the, um, this road going toward the cider mill. That little brown one that's, you know, like this big, um, it would be nice to get that beautified some way. And maybe that is a partnership that we ask, you know, we have some civic organizations that usually at the end of the year sometimes do something.
Could make an adopt-a-spot maybe.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, adopt a sign, um, but we also do have some, um, yeah, I mean, we, we do have beautiful signs, um, for, for each of our departments, you know, Public Works and stuff. Maybe if it's just something that even ties into that standard. Maybe if it's just something that even ties into that um, standard, it doesn't have to be that big obviously. But it is the way that people are, are shown how to get to the lodge and many people who have family coming from out of state, they miss that turn because there's nothing to.
Doesn't stand out.
Doesn't stand out at all, so, that's a request. Maybe some group out there just heard that.
And then I was thinking about going back to the crowdsourcing for things such as um, uh, the museums, a couple ideas that came to mind were, that I sent to Steve, um, not Steve, to Mike. Sorry, we, we were talking about Steve before, but like I make a difference today, we might be able to be considered as a community-wide event that might be something we're, we're discussing through the PCC as an event that could help families in need with projects such as, you know, building decks, building ramps. Um, I've done it in the past with colleges, it's definitely a really enlightening experience that you can get everyone involved in, but also um, possibly tying that in with uh, public services, you know, um, I think it was what, two thousand thirteen, we did through um, Guiding Providence, we actually repainted a lot of the middle school. We just volunteered thirty or forty people, yeah.
That was rebuilding America.
Rebuilding America, so something along those lines, you know, possibly the rec projects we could do on the green or in other areas that just as long as we have the volunteer resources and build a dedicated day for it, it might be a way to have both crowdsourcing and community involvement simultaneously.
I've always wanted to get somebody to redo the wall, the um, the um, old wall we have here in front of the post office, like, but I know it's an issue because of it's so close to the road, but it's a historic, historic wall, it's.
We might have to talk to our fence.
Our fence guy? Our fence person. Fence viewer.
Fence viewer, so that fence viewer, yes.
The fence viewer.
We have to speak to our fence viewer about that, we actually have a position for that.
Right, he goes around and he looks at the, the rock, right?
Yes, Mr. Rubina.
And then actually a final one that someone reached out to me about personally was um, if the town would ever consider a town-wide tag sale, about similar what Vernon does. I don't know what logistics that would require trying to promote something of that sort of event.
Is that a town-run event though, or is it just a, a Vernon tag sale, like I don't think the town runs that.
They, they get a volunteer that organizes the um, the map and the dates and um, puts up the documentation.
And I think there's certain businesses that get involved too, like actually Sam's Tux King Shop usually has um, a, a group out there that's, I think it all goes towards a common cause or a common fundraising stuff, might be another source of crowdfunding, um, support for various projects.
West Hartford does the same thing where they have it uh, at um, uh, one of the uh, the senior centers and they actually sell off squares. It's like five, it's like five dollars per spot or fifteen dollars per, I can't remember how much, but you buy a spot and then uh, you know, that basically is the fundraising aspect of it and that people, sometimes uh, you can make a choice to donate ten percent whatever you take in um, as, as part of a, you know, donation, but it's in, it's a small amount, it's like ten or fifteen dollars per, per slot. And they have, sometimes they go a hundred, a hundred and fifty spots depending on how big the area is, so.
I don't know who that would fall under.
It depends by where it would be hosted and, you know, if it was, if it was on a month.
Yeah, but Vernon, this is.
Another project, nothing, nothing.
No, I know, right, we're, we're gonna, this is, yeah, this one is.
This is just more of a discussion, it's like that was approached to me, so I was trying to make sure it was community.
I was gonna say, when we, like.
Tom Anserk when he said, he did the community tag sale and he did that for a few years, we used to do it in the gym when we did it.
I, I thought so, like, yeah, it was, at the school, he did it.
But you don't even have to have it on a, a public area, you can just create a local map that would have, people having it at their house. So they paid twenty dollars to be on the map for that day.
Oh, wow, okay.
And then um, the time commitment is someone creating that map, which can be cumbersome, um, because sometimes the, everything doesn't line up the way it's supposed to. Um, and then the advertising for it, sending that information out, so it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, on our locations, it could be.
So we wouldn't have to provide like safe, public safety and everything else?
Exactly, and we wouldn't have to clean up.
If you guys, if people wanna have tag sales, right, and just, yeah, e-blast it out, so.
Right.
Saying, hey, we're thinking of doing a tag sale.
Like a directory almost, or for the week-long event and then have individuals, you know, sponsored to have their name listed and blast it out to like the general choir or the other media outlets, so. Yeah.
You just want to.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. All, all those items were actuarial items for Steve.
All in favor? Um, anybody else?
For communications?
Uh, we're in communication, there are petitions from the council persons.
Well, it's not really a petition, but it's comment, uh, that, I just have to say that I went into this Sunday sort of dreading how things were gonna go and I think that this weekend was outstanding and I, I mean, I think that the bipartisanship, we didn't agree on everything on a lot of, on a few different areas, but I think just working together now, like making sure that we have the same goals, it really gives me a lot of hope, um, going forward and, and working together. I think that we can accomplish so much, the way that we did there, um, we've worked through a lot of different issues and I just, uh, I mean, I think it was outstanding. And I, it gives me, it made me very excited about moving forward and about some of the things we can all accomplish together.
It might be good once we do that, and once we kind of find those goals, you know, there's gonna be a poster board, maybe even having just a one-page or document on some of our goals on like the bulletin board over there, just having them kind of signed to it, just to, you know, kind of commit ourselves to that process for the next year and a half or year, some odd months.
Now you took that good phone, Mike.
Right?
I think this is an opportunity, since Kurt's not here, it's all his job to do all the stuff.
That's right, like listen, we can assign stuff, we can assign stuff.
Hey, old Steve's action.
Steve has just moved them over. Um, I had just.
Those were those to the other person.
That's right, you got it, okay, okay. So, um, I actually, Pat had reached out to me to ask um, how we were doing on the complete count. So I didn't know if that was on our agenda coming up anytime soon to kind of review.
Well, I'm not sure if it will be the council's agenda, but it might be the, the complete, the twenty-twenty census committee needs to organize, uh, we need to have our first meeting, so. Brenda and I are co-chairs of that uh, committee and uh, it's called the twenty-twenty complete count committee, that's the census complete count committee of PCC. And um, it's eleven people, uh, representation from uh, town staff, uh, council, board of ed, superintendent staff, faith-based organization, a nonprofit organization, might be missing one or two there, sorry about that, but uh, we have the roster complete except for the board of ed rep and the superintendent staff rep. Uh, I know Walt is working on it, so it's something that once we get those two people, we can have our first meeting. Um, actually, I had to, I, I, I spoke with the lieutenant governor at the um, Parker Place ceremony and she mentioned it to me that, you know, all of the, she, her goal is to get all of the communities uh, up and running with their committees by New Year's, so we're right on track. Uh, we have nine out of our eleven members, uh, we could probably even organize a meeting with just the nine of us just to get started until the other two come on board, but.
I think they're getting appointed tomorrow.
Perfect, so then we'll have eleven of eleven, so, yeah.
Awesome, I won't let her know that we are on it then.
And we, we're thinking at the moment, we have to send out a, we have to send out an email to all eleven members, but we're actually thinking perhaps daytime meetings might work for, for that cadre, so that'd be great.
Yes, well, a lot of it is staff, right, so.
Yeah.
And, and the board of ed um, member who hasn't been appointed yet, um, she also has the availability during the day.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good, good. Um, for myself, I was just wondering if we could get a status of the fire truck, if it has been ordered or if there's a timeframe or if we have any information on it yet.
I'd love to get over there.
Now, uh, the chief I know is looking at trying to get specs and stuff like that together, but he's nowhere near the place to, to go out to bid or see if there's anything on state bid. Um, as you know, in the past, we had a funding source in place, I know you wanna discuss that further. We have not issued any short-term debt as, as at this point in time. Um, I'm working on trying to update our whole fund balance like a projection, which is very difficult when we don't have a budget in place for next year yet. And, you know, we haven't even begun to develop it, so to try to give you a, a feel for where fund balance will be moving forward with the things that are, we will be facing in the next buzz, budget is very difficult at this time. Um, I do have, you know, fu- historical fund balance information. Um, so I, I know one of the goals that you were discussing was possibly to use fund balance money and pay for this outright rather than purchasing this vehicle through debt, um, which is, you know, something I don't object to, it's a, it's a policy decision, but we also have to make sure that you're properly informed of the overall financial situation of the town before you move to do something like that. Um, so to answer your question, it, he has not moved forward yet with the purchase of it, um, but when it gets closer to that, we're certainly.
We're gonna have those conversations.
On this conversation.
Perfect. Um, and I was just wondering when we would see the financial results through so far, just the beginning of the, where we are right now.
Right, right here?
Yeah.
We usually do it the end of each quarter, so you'll be getting end of December and, but you do have one, uh, there should have been one sent to you in September or beginning of October. Right, so.
So probably the end of January.
Somewhere in the middle of January, once we close out the month of December, we'll, that'll just give you an update.
Okay, that's all that, I have, anybody else? Um, then move thirteen, public participation, any subjects of jurisdiction, town council, three minutes, Mike?
You move who you chair?
He abstains again. Uh, all right, that moves us number sixteen.
Senator, can I motion to adjourn the meeting at eight forty more?
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any staying? Everybody have a great holiday and I'll see you in January.